Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome to the Tuesday, September 20th budget hearing, is Breann Robertson here? From New Covenant Fellowship? Commissioner Pritchett, you want to?
Lord, we come to you tonight asking you to give us wisdom on how you would like this county move forward. Father, I just pray right now that we would do what's good for the citizens of this county. Father, we thank you for all that you've blessed us with and given us, and we thank you for the relationships that are developed in this room, in your name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. And with that, we'll call this meeting to order. Do you stand to join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands in the Constitution, and to the individual and liberty of each citizen of our home.
All right. We're going to move straight into public hearings. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If Commissioner Smith is available, I'd like to make a motion to allow him to participate telephonically.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobias for Commissioner Smith to participate telephonically. Commissioner Smith, can you hear us?
I can.
Great. And a second by Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioners, Agenda Item D1 allows for the reading of the tentative aggregate operating millage rate to fund the portion of the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget that is supported by property taxes. At this time, I'd ask the Budget Office to read into the record the tentative aggregate millage rate for fiscal year 2022-2023.
Commissioners, the aggregate tentative millage rate for the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget is 4.9777 mils. This represents no change from the aggregate rollback rate of 4.9777 mils.
Commissioners, Agenda Item D2 allows for the public to comment on the county budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Before we begin public comment, I would ask the Budget Office to read into the record the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget.
The fiscal year 2022-2023 budget is $1,849,105,824. The budget represents an increase of $91,916,844, or 5.23% more than the fiscal year 2122 current budget of $1,757,188,980.
We are now ready to accept public comment on the budget for fiscal year 2022-2023.
All right. I have no public comment cards.
At this point, it's recommended that the Board discuss the budget. Since the Board must adopt the millages and related budgets separately, comments and motions concerning the individual tax levies can also be made at the time each millage is adopted. If we're ready to move on to Item D3, if there's no Board discussion, Item D3 allows for public comment, discussion, and adoption of the final millage for fiscal year 2022-2023. Madam Chair, if there are any public comments on D3, now would be an appropriate time to hear those comments.
And again, I have no public comment cards.
For Agenda Item D3, the budget personnel will now read into the record the millage and related avalore revenue for each taxing authority. Following the reading of each tax levy, it is recommended that the Chair entertain a motion for approval of that millage.
For the General Fund, countywide, the fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 3.2619, which is a 2.17% change from the rollback millage of 3.1927, generating $176,36,025.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Brevard Library District fiscal year 22-2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.3763, which is a 2.45% increase from the rollback millage of 0.3673, generating $20,431,268.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
For the Brevard County Mosquito Control District, the fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.1527, a 2.55% increase from the rollback millage of 0.1489, generating
Undertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Fire Control MSTU fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.5458, which is a 2.40% increase from the rollback millage of 0.5330, generating $14,307,046.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Recreation District 1 MSTU fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.4818, a 2.73% increase from the rollback millage of 0.4690, generating $3,269,718.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias for approval?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Recreation District 4 Maintenance fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.5775, which is a 1.53% increase from the rollback millage of 0.5688, generating
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
For the Tyco Airport Authority, the fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.0000, representing no change from the rollback millage of 0.0000, generating zero dollars.
Motion? Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Law Enforcement MSTU fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.9660, which is a 2.48% increase from the rollback millage of 0.9426, generating $23,153,738.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Road and Bridge District 1 MSTU fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.5531, which is a 2.77% increase from the rollback millage of 0.5382, generating $2,445,593.
Can I get a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Road and Bridge District 2 MSTU fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.1914, which is a 1.16% change from the rollback millage of 0.1892, generating $1,138,450.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Road and Bridge District 3 MSTU fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.2160, which is a 2.96% increase from the rollback millage of 0.2098, generating $539,228.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Road and Bridge District 4 MSTU fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.2407, which is a 2.86% increase from the rollback millage of 0.2340, generating $1,731,397.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Road and Bridge District 5 MSTU fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.3215, which is a 2.98% increase from the rollback millage of .3122, generating $640,836.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Road and Bridge District 4 MSTU Beaches fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.2090, which is a 3.01% increase from the rollback millage of 0.2029, generating $170,335.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Road and Bridge District 4 MSTU Merritt Island South fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.1098, which is a 3.29% change from the rollback millage of 0.1063, generating $23,876.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Environmentally Endangered Lands fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.0522, which is a 2.55% increase from the rollback millage of 0.0509, generating $2,834,207.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Port St. John Canaveral Groves Recreation MSTU fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.2984, which is a 2.93% increase from the rollback millage of 0.2899, generating
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The North Brevard Recreation District fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.1872, which is a 2.63% increase from the rollback millage of 0.1824, generating $820,272.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Merritt Island Recreation MSTU fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.2684, which is a 0.75% increase from the rollback millage of 0.2664, generating $1,218,415.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The South Brevard Recreation District fiscal year 2022-2023 tentative millage is 0.2469, which is a 2.75% increase from the rollback millage of 0.2403, generating $7,864,908.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
All right. So moving along to the debt service millages, and there are no rollback millage rates associated with these, so we'll just be reading the tentative millage and the avalore revenue. So for the environmentally endangered lands debt service, the fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.0425, which generates $2,318,388.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Port St. John Canaveral Groves Recreation MSTU debt millage for fiscal year 2022-2023 is 0.0000, generating zero dollars of avalore revenue.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett? Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The North Brevard Recreation District debt fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.2390, generating $1,050,214.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
The Merritt Island Recreation MSTU debt millage for fiscal year 2022-2023 is 0.1046, generating $474,837.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Last one.
The South Brevard Recreation District debt millage fiscal year 2223 tentative millage is 0.0391, generating $1,251,541.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioners, the Budget Office will read into the record the resolution establishing the county's final millages for fiscal year 2022-2023. Following the reading of the resolution, it's recommended that the Chair entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
A resolution to adopt final millages pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt final millages for fiscal year 2022-2023 and providing an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, is taxing authority for the taxing entities identified in Exhibit A, which is attached hereto and may part herof by this reference, does hereby levy the millages specified in Exhibit A, and does hereby state the percent by which the aggregate millage to be levied is a change from the aggregate rollback rate.
Commission, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioners, for Agenda Item D4, the Budget Office will read into the record the resolution adopting the county's total budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Following the reading of this resolution, it's recommended that the Chair entertain a motion for approval of the resolution.
A resolution to adopt a final budget pursuant to Chapter 200 Florida statutes authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the final operating and capital budget for fiscal year 2022-2023 and providing for an effective date. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, as taxing and governing authority, does hereby adopt an operating and capital budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2022, and ending September 30th, 2023, in the amount of $1,849,105,824.
Okay, Commission? Can I get a motion? Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioners, Agenda Item D5 requests that the Board adopt the attached resolutions establishing the final millages for fiscal year 2022-2023 for those dependent special taxing districts for which the county levies a millage and authorize the Chair to sign the resolutions. Florida Statute 200.065 allows the Board to adopt tax levies for all dependent special taxing districts by a single vote unless separate votes are requested by a member of the public.
Commission? Motion by Commissioner Tobias to approve all resolutions?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Commissioners, Agenda Item D6 requests that the Board adopt the attached resolutions adopting the final budgets for fiscal year 2022-2023 for the county's dependent special districts and authorize the Chair to sign the resolutions. Florida Statute 200.065 allows the Board to adopt budgets for all dependent special taxing districts by a single vote unless separate votes are requested by a member of the public.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias to adopt all resolutions?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Finally, Commissioners, Item D7 requests that the Chair entertain a motion to authorize the county manager or designate to execute all letters and exhibits necessary to establish that Brevard County has complied with Sections 200.065 and Section 218.63 Florida statutes, the truth in millage law.
Commission?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett? Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, guys, so much for all your hard work. And that concludes the public hearing for that. Item E1.
Good evening, Commissioners. So mosquito control's final budget was just approved in Item D6 for $12,873,685. So we request here in Item E1 that the Board authorize the Chair to approve and sign the same budget but on state forms so we could submit them to the Florida Department of Agriculture. This is required by the Florida statute to maintain our status as a certified mosquito control district.
Commission? Motion to approve by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item E2.
Isn't that you, Commissioner Pritchett? Yes, I just would like to make a motion to approve the resolution. It was kind of a short amount of time, and I'm just going to email it to them.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve resolution?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to board reports. Mr. Abate?
I have no report.
Mr. Richardson?
I have no report.
Commissioner Pritchett?
No report.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple things. Number one, the Governor just announced that Mr. Tim Bobanick would be filling the role of supervisor election, so I want to wish him the best. I know it's a tough time to come in, but I'm sure he'll do a great job. He's got some big shoes to fill. And second of all, and I want to thank the Chair for this, we sent a letter out to the CRAs. First of all, I'd like to mention again what a great job Myra is doing to set some priorities. I think it's very apparent where you put your money is where you put your priorities, and they've definitely done a good job in a short period of time. And I want to thank, I guess it's coming from, I have no idea to go in a different direction, but I guess it's coming from District 1. I certainly want to thank Commissioner Pritchett because we got a letter from Dan Diesel, and they're under no obligation to follow this. We're taking the lead and putting our priority there, but it looks like Titusville is moving in that direction, so thank you. I imagine you had a lot to do with that, and it's very important, and I appreciate that. And it's really great to see that happening because we see cities going in the other direction. And we just got a letter from the city of Cocoa Beach who sent us a letter, and in the letter it says, "Cocoa Beach, quote, 'does not lend itself well to affordable housing.'" I'll tell you what Cocoa Beach lends itself well to: tax increases. It is embarrassing not only to be Republican, as many of these folks claim to be. Not only did they not leave the millage rate where it was, which would have been a tax increase, they'd of course have to go to the rollback rate, they increased the millage, it looks like almost one full mil, which is absolutely insane. So these folks are raising taxes over and over and over again, and then squandering CRA resources, and then they have the audacity to send us a letter saying that, again, they're very concerned about it, but does not lend itself well to affordable housing. It's embarrassing on so many levels, but it just goes to show what great partners we have up there in Titusville. Hopefully, the other folks have better responses than what we hear from the very, very, I want to say liberal city of Cocoa Beach because they keep on raising taxes, but clearly, they also don't care about those in need. Embarrassing, embarrassing to their taxpayers, embarrassing to the folks in need, but it's in great contrast to what is happening with Myra and what is happening with Titusville. So thank you so much, Commissioner Pritchett, for your leadership in District 1, getting Titusville on board with this important initiative. Thanks.
Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Okay. And I have no report, so thank you to everybody who put their hard work and sweat and tears into this budget like they do every year, and I appreciate all that you do for us. With that, meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida. Space Coast Government Television of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed...